Parks and Recreation, Mr. Miller to discuss the Riverside Park Budget.
Are we rolling, Bert?
Ready? He says we're all.
All the TVs.
Oh, he's not, oh, okay.
He might be ready, but we ain't.
All right, ready?
We'll have a little bit of time left, I think.
All right. Okay. Hey, Mike.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and Riverside Park Budget, Parks Recreation, Mike Miller. Okay, I wrote down what I wanted to present tonight, and if anybody wants a copy, I brought 12 copies, so I'll be glad to give each copy, including this one. So City Council meeting tonight, comments from Park Committee meeting. I've been on council now for three months, and it is my wish to help facilitate better communication, which is why I actually have the following request, with the hope of improving communication between all branches of city government and the public. So what I'm requesting are, one, is that City Council be updated on the hiring of all of the additional staff that we approved for hire. Two of those included two park staff, I've been following that, but I am interested in the hiring of all that city staff. We hired them with the knowledge, or at least my thought of approving that, is that the city needed some additional staff to help get things done, and I think by having the correct number of staff to get the job done, that helps with internal communication. So sticking with communication theme, I think that would help to get those positions hired, whether they are the two in the auditor's office, whether they're the two at Parks, whether they're the public lands, or the cemetery, the assistant fire chief position, all of those positions, I think by having those filled will help with communication and getting work done. I'd like to get started off, because I know I've missed a lot of stuff over the years since I wasn't here, is a complete list of park projects that are planned for and to be completed this year, 2023, a complete list of major park projects that are planned for 2023, of course, and also if we're already looking into 24, what major, if there are any major park projects, what are those thoughts ahead of time right now? And then specifically, which I think will cover most of the above two, but updates on the Riverside Park splash pad and facilities within the park that were talked about for this year, the C A and C Depot and that surrounding area, I know there's been a lot of discussion, I'm not quite up to speed on all of that yet, and I think there's other interested parties in the community that are, Riverview Park, Chelmire Park, Ariel and Arch Park, because I think we've got some lines going through there, right? I think for those parks, so it'd be nice to know where we're at on that, because I think the West End probably asked about that, too, but I know I've been asked about Riverview Park, where that's at. Also, I've met a couple of times now with the park board, and the park board we need to work on, and I've already talked to the city about this.
Councilman, you're referring to the Ariel Foundation?
Ariel Foundation Park, yeah. Yeah, and I'm aware of some of the projects planned out there for this year, you know, like an example, I think the tower's closed from now through Wednesday to fix the beacons. So if anybody wants to go in the tower, you won't be able to for the next couple of days, but the beacons will be fixed, so that'll be good. And also, a plan to keep the park board informed of city park activities and planning. I think as a group, we need to work on, we have a park board, they need to know what's going on, they haven't been knowing what's going on for a while, and we just need to fix that. And then, of course, we need to make sure that we've got complete, and that's the goal of this, is communication and complete transparency with council and the public on all park projects as it relates to planning and cost. And I think some of this maybe could carry over into other projects, so I'm hoping to set an example within the park rec community. And also the levy, I don't know where that falls, I know I've talked to several people, I'd like to see us have, I'm throwing it in Parks, because I think it's part of Parks, but it's really public lands, but eventually, hopefully, it will connect all the parks. But I'd like to see us have some quarterly updates on where we're at with that, and where that's going, and to make sure that the councils kept updated on activities related to its care, maintenance and plans. And then after City Council has been updated, and we don't need to do this in two weeks, but if it takes a month or six weeks to get a plan together to update us on these things, I'm fine with that, doesn't need to be like in two weeks. But once we are caught up on all of these activities, I'd like to see us have quarterly updates, and I think that'll keep us and the public informed on all those types of activities. And I would also request that we have quarterly updates from the city auditor's office and the city treasurer, just to make sure that as City Council, we understand our finances, what's coming and what's going, and I think that would be very helpful for City Council also, grab a hold of and wrap their minds around. You know, although this is all positive, I think, some may not, I think the best thing is today, we all survived the eclipse, and I think I went over to Ariel Foundation Park today with my youngest daughter, had a great time, there were 3,000 or 4,000 people over there. I think the conservancy board and the SPY did an excellent job on having a well-attended, fun, family, outdoor activity. So if you see any of those folks, you might let them know, but I think they had a great kids' van, a couple of food trucks, the SPY went out, SPY Spot, right, it was called? They did a fantastic job with having youth activities, they did a great job, and it was well-attended, if you were there, hopefully, if not, you missed out on a good time. But it just goes to show you the value of outdoor recreation in the city and the value of our parks. I didn't get a chance to see the other parks, but I would imagine that people were probably in all of the city parks today, and that's what they're there for. There were a number of people from out of state, there were a number of people from other counties, and it was a good thing. I mean, it almost looked like the Fourth of July with the number of people there today, but it weren't quite that many people. I know I counted at least 1,200 people at one time, and that's why I'm coming up with that 3,000 to 4,000. So anyway, it was a great time had by all over there, so I appreciate it. If anybody wants to copy this, I'll get a copy to the City Hall, and then if anybody on council wants one, I'll pass them around today. I'm done.
Please do.
We want copies.
Pass them around.
Anything else, Mr. Miller?
I'm done.
All right. We'll move now to land and use development, Mrs. Keener, for the Knox Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a Knox County Comprehensive Plan that was done a few years ago, and it is on the knoxadf.com website under data. For anyone who would like to read that, I would highly encourage all of council to look up that older one, because we are currently moving into an opportunity to take a larger part of the next Knox County Comprehensive Plan. This will, oh, it was done in 2018. This will be an updated version, it's led by the Area Development Foundation, who, as all of council know, is really our economic development arm. So the mayor and I have had a couple of meetings with the group that is going to be facilitating that, and we are coming up with some names that will be representing the city for this project. And the exciting thing that we're looking at doing this time is actually having the city of Mount Vernon, because it is the county seat, and because it is so important in the community, to actually have a chunk within the Comprehensive Plan specifically for Mount Vernon and our contributions, and really where we want to see the city going. I think that this is important with all of the plans we have, I know we have the traffic design plan coming forward, we have the Parks Master Plan, I think we have some utility plans that'll all be folded into that. I would like to let the mayor have a couple of minutes to talk about this as well, but I would encourage everybody to go and look at this Comprehensive Plan, so that you have an idea of what we are going to be involved in, and you can have a better understanding of the value that is going to be coming from this investment that the city makes. I think that this is very important for us, moving forward with the growth that we're expecting to see, and also with maintaining the environment that we all know and love about Knox County. So I'll let the mayor have a couple of minutes, just to talk about his perspective on this, what he thinks is important, and a little bit about some of those meetings we've had.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Council. Today, we did have a meeting with the Area Development Foundation and the Knox County Commissioner, well, Teresa Fee Miller, and Daryl Severn from Rachel Planning. Amber unfortunately couldn't make that, but what we're doing at this point is coming up with a list of names of people who come from, represent diverse backgrounds, diverse lived experiences and so forth, to serve as a steering committee. Now, what the specs are that we know of at this particular point from the, our consultant who's going to be leading us through this, one about 30 names for the entire county, and we're looking at maybe 10 sort of serving dual purpose for the county and the city. The reason why we are bringing it to this body is because, as the county seat, we really do serve some key roles in terms of manufacturing, housing, density, and among various other roles that we play, including the arts, the downtown, and so forth. And so we're looking at, right now, looking at getting the lineup card right. So that's our main focus right now. We are not ready to share any names, because we haven't talked to the people yet, but we just kind of identified who we think we would like to help represent the community there. But this is very important, because we're, as you know, as you all well know, we've unkinked the hose on our housing development. Economic development is happening, and we've noticed that from the reports from the treasurer's office, the revenues are coming in very well. And so I think it's probably time that the city carve out its own part of this, and in so doing, will be asked to put some money just to help develop ours, which will be enfolded into the overall Comprehensive Plan for the county. But what we are hoping to do is to bring our transportation master plan, our utilities master plan, our parks master plan, our downtown master plan, all of these plans that we have, rolling them into and having those evaluated, so that we can have a nice, tight vision in terms of where we're going to be heading over the next five to seven years, is what we're trying to get out of this before we have to rewrite this again. And so it was not, it's not the same city as it was seven years ago, eight years ago. And so it's time for us to reset and take a look at where we want to be. We'll also have a zoning code that's going to be coming out, that's going to be very important, that will probably set the course for the next 30 years for the city. And so we'll have more information on that, we're very, very close. We've been in contact with Mrs. Keener about that, and she'll be spearheading those series of public meetings as well. So there's a lot going on, but I think it probably would be wise that we invest some of the city's money into a plan that we can sink our teeth into, and the county, the city, we're all paddling in the same direction.
I would note that this particular plan, it started kind of the development in 2023, and it's set to be wrapped up by 2025. So there is some time before we're going to be seeing this, but I do think that it's really important to jump in. And I'm sure we'll have another meeting on this in the future, as we have names and as we really start to dig into it. But I will say that the consulting company has done some really impressive plans that ADF has at their office. If you guys would like to see what they've done in the past, and see how that can be applied here in Mount Vernon, I would encourage you to look into that. But I was very impressed with what I saw and what I heard at those meetings, and I think that this is an important step for the city to take. So we'll probably be coming back in the next couple of weeks with more information. And I will give up all the rest of my time, unless somebody has a question.
One question here, Keener, what was the date on the current plan that's out there?
So the last plan was completed in 2018, and these plans are typically redone. So there was one in 2006, there was one in 2012, there was the last one in 2018, and now there is this one, which I think puts it a year late, but we'll blame it on COVID.
I know the chamber did one in the 90s called Focus 2000, and the chamber worked in the city and the county, and what the people in this community wanted, one was more green space, and we've done a lot.
And it does help us understand what the community needs as we move forward, and I think that listening to the community members who are here is really vital as we anticipate growth, so that we can know where we're going. Any other questions? I hand over my time, Mr. President.
Okay. We're going to adjourn the land and use and development, and the new committee name, and now we're going to move to Employee and Community Relations, Mrs. Woods, to discuss wages and benefits.
Thank you. And I apologize, I have lost my voice, so I'll try not to talk too much tonight. Tonight, there are two ordinances up for third reading, ordinance 202414 and ordinance 202416. I'm going to go ahead and rip the Band-Aid off and say it's my intention tonight to table those indefinitely. I've had some conversations with folks on council, and we'll discuss this here in a minute. I think there's some questions on data that council's received, I've had some communication with department heads who aren't fully in support of what's presented. I think there's some issues of timing that have come up, and perception. So in saving my voice, I don't know if anybody else wants to speak up of what conversations you've had or we've had together.
I think to move this thing forward, I think council is wanting to hear from the auditor, treasurer, and the city, and also hopefully the update of the report that was done.
Clemens Nelson.
That report is updated hopefully here soon, but I think overall, council would like to hear more information on those folks, as far as how it was all put together, and a more detailed justification of those wages, but we also need to hear from the auditor and the treasurer.
And I will say, Mrs. Sevold and I spent some time with Terry, and just, you know, we were given this compensation analysis, just in my viewing, I conferred with Terry, the current salary column isn't always correct here, so I question the basis for starting when that's not their current salary. So if, just some data questions, and if we need to meet to discuss that further, that's fine.
So I'm going to have to, I'm a little wildly disturbed about what has transpired here, because we are now in the third reading of this piece of legislation. You have before you the people that take care of the people, who have been promised appropriate compensation for years now, and they have not received that. Here is a list of information of anticipated questions that were never asked by a select few members of council members. I cannot read your minds, and I appreciate that you met with the auditor, but you did not meet with the HR director, who was in charge, who was tasked with performing this study. You did not meet with the folks at Clemens Nelson, who organized the study. You did not meet with the mayor, you did not meet with myself, I don't know which department head you're referring to said that they weren't happy with this. But this is a massive piece of legislation that we have worked on for months, and this is information that we just assumed that you'd want to know, and that we worked on today, because these supposed questions that we were just supposed to assume were coming, this is what we anticipated. I can only provide you what you ask of me, and this is a general, we have been asked for transparency and communication, and in some ways, we can do better, but it has to be a two-way street. So again, I come back to this, where did this data come from? We have an answer to that. Why do we need to make these adjustments now? Because we need to be a competitive employer now. We struggle with retaining and recruiting now. It's not a problem of, hey, in the future, we might have this issue, it is happening now. And people, both in and out of our bargaining unit, are paying attention to this meeting tonight, to determine the future of their employment in the city of Mount Vernon. The last meeting, it was requested, well, will this come at the sacrifice of projects? Maybe, but I'll tell you what, projects will absolutely be sacrificed if nobody works here. Will we have to raise taxes? Nobody's talking about taxes. The mayor brought up a slide that shows the amount of grants that we have brought in, these, look at these people, they have worked their hind ends off, bringing in more money for this city. You have a piece of legislation on tonight, 202420, that's going to help recapture funds that the fire department works on. We are doing everything we can, and I talked to an AD today about why he could go at any moment, he could go and make twice as much in the private sector. And why doesn't he do it? You know what he said? Because I like working for Mount Vernon, I like being here. But that only goes so far, and eventually, it's going to not be enough. So I come to you, council, and say, you're going to table this for more questions?
Please do not table.
Absolutely, absolutely, excuse me, absolutely, because as chair of this committee, this was put on the agenda two meetings ago, and I didn't get any phone call that it was even being put on, let alone information on it. So I'm going to ask you, the column for the current salary came from where?
It came from either legislation, or it came from Civica in the payroll system. And I will note that not all data is correct in the authority payroll system, so.
And had we had that information, had we had that question?
We just got that information.
And why do you think data isn't correct in the payroll system?
That is a great question.
That's a great question.
And if we would have a...
What makes you believe it's not correct in the payroll system?
It's not always updated.
And do you have data that shows that?
We certainly do.
We do.
With you?
Councilwoman Woods, I would encourage you to have a meeting with me outside of this setting.
Absolutely, absolutely, anytime. I'm just saying, we're given data that we're supposed to base our decisions on.
I'm going to push back and say not anytime, because this is a pattern, this is, well, we have questions, and I never get any.
And we count on you as administration to give us the data we need to make good decisions.
We provide this legislation, and we assume that you are going to, again, I come back to, I cannot read your minds, but I hear from several of you.
Please do not table this.
Yeah.
Please look at the people in the room.
I hear from several of you, and when you ask your questions, do you feel that you are not given your answers?
So I have a question, have we gotten the Clemens Nelson study back?
We don't have this year's data, it's going to be probably another four to five weeks, and then that data is going to have to be analyzed.
So aren't we supposed to have the Clemens Nelson study by the end of last year, according to our previous safety service director?
We have 2021 data, but the proposed salary adjustments that are in front of you is last year's Morpsy data, so it will not go down.
So why are we paying for an updated Clemens Nelson study if that is not the data that we're going to utilize? Because I'm assuming that we're paying them.
We are, but I'm going to go ahead and stop you right there, because the information that Clemens Nelson has provided us already, utilizing the prior data and the Morpsy data, is what is being proposed to you right now at min, mid, and max.
Except for what's in red.
I'm sorry?
Except for what's in red.
I'm not quite sure where you're referring.
I was told what's in red isn't backed up by data, it was a guess, that's your best guess at what it should be.
It wasn't mine, no, it was Clemens Nelson, they provided the data from Morpsy.
But the blue says that we're still waiting.
We're currently getting additional data for this year, but they provided numbers that reflect last year's information.
Yeah, but to my point, the current data that is going to come is not going to be lower.
No.
The information that you have before you is asked at a mid-level. If you do not have the appetite to fund at a mid-level, we're not even asking for the max compensation at a market-based rate.
Not even close.
If you are waiting for new data that is going to somehow be like, oh, good news, it was an aberration of inflation, that didn't happen, and we can pay everybody $60,000, that's not happening, that's not coming. So if you're not ready to fund at the mid-level of this study, why do you even care? We'll worry about funding Clemens Nelson and paying them, you're not going to like what you see.
Right.
I'm just saying, I think part of the problem council has, is it from the city, the treasurer and the auditor, getting information that isn't like the same plane? So if council members get, we don't have the money, or revenue is going, might go down.
Sure.
That's, I think that's the biggest concern of council, is that type of information.
Right.
So for council to make a decision, we need open, valid, and the best information possible from all, from auditor, treasurer, and the mayor's office. And right now, I think with, that's part of, I think, the problem with some of the discussion on council, is that right now, we don't have that. And so if council's being told we don't have money to fund stuff, or not that much money, what we need to know is that's true and accurate, and if not, why? If there's a concern of revenue going down, which when we did the appropriations budget, I don't believe that, I think early on in the year, we looked at the, you know, the future estimates that I've seen from both the auditor and from our treasurer, looked pretty good. But the problem is, is now, if council's getting ready to make a decision, and then people are like, well, wait a second here, we need to take another look at this, that's what causes problems with council. And that's what we've got to get through. So I think that's why the decision to table is there, is to get from all three other branches of government, or parts of the city government, is a complete answer of knowing what direction to go in. Because we did have a council meeting where we did not, and I'm bringing it up later tonight, for that park rec director, where we were told we did not have the money to fund the position at that time, but we would have it later. So I have waited till later, we're going to put that up tonight for a vote, so we need to know those answers. So, and at that night, we were told we didn't have the money for that position, and so we didn't move forward with it, that's why we waited. And we went through that with the whole appropriations part, as far as exactly what funds the money in, is the money there or it's not? And I think those are questions that council has.
So I suppose this is a question for the auditor.
Correct.
We have to compensate over the course of X amount of funds to appropriately appropriate 400 and, excuse me, I do not have it in front of me, $420,000, does the city not have $420,000?
We have to take an assessment of that, sir.
Okay, so there you have it, heard it here first, we don't know if we have $420,000.
So a question I have, because I was under the understanding that many of the departments under the mayor's office have budgeted for pay increases.
We absolutely have.
And that was some of the discussion that we had when we were going through our budget appropriations.
Yeah.
Is why were some people in this, you know, 33% was the highest, and whatever the lowest was, 2% pay increases. So since if it's already budgeted, if this was the past, do we not have to come up with, we don't have to come up with this much money to fulfill this, because it's already budgeted in the city budget?
So similarly, to rip a Band-Aid off, because it needs said, many of our department heads, practically all of our department heads, because all of you sat through these department head meetings, it was a bit of a change of pace in the way that we did appropriations this year. We pulled in the relevant department heads to sit in those meetings, so you could see how the sausage gets made. They all appropriated for adjustments, we didn't know what those adjustments would look like. So going through this, we now know that we will need to re-appropriate to make sure that those line items meet up to what we appropriate for. We do re-appropriations almost in every council meeting throughout this year, there is nothing different about what we would have to do. So you have, in this document, an answer to a question that we assumed someone would ask. What are the next steps if we were to pass this? A reappropriation meeting would begin immediately to appropriately fund the salary line items in all the applicable department budgets. These meetings would be between department heads, the administration, the auditor, and relevant members of council, if they so choose to attend. The proposal would be brought to council for consideration at the next council meeting. It is not $420,000, I believe that was the figure that we had discussed the last time, from the general revenue fund, that we would just have to slash and burn some other project. We absolutely have $420,000 across 66 checkbooks, as Terry likes to mention. For instance, even in Public Works, we have three, four different departments that we split that up in. One department just needs $14,000 more, one needs $6,000 more. We can reappropriate that through that department, or from the general revenue fund. We'll constantly bring in more money throughout the year, we can get grants, it can be done. The question is, do you have the stomach to appropriately compensate the people that help the people? Do you have the stomach to actually authorize and direct this administration and the auditor to do our jobs and take care of these people? Or are you going to table it and say, well, we need more questions answered, and then not ask the questions?
Okay, so I'll ask a question that I want you to answer. What do I say to the public, to somebody who's getting a 36.7%? a 36.76% increase? And don't call it an adjustment.
100% is an adjustment.
It is a raise.
Absolutely.
It is a raise.
We will disagree on that. You will tell them that they haven't received that adjustment at a market-based rate for years. You will tell them that if that person leaves and goes and gets paid appropriately at another municipality, or God forbid, in the private sector, where they, they make twice as much, that similarly to what we did in the wastewater plant, we will sit there empty for eight months. Or we will not be able to hire the HR generalist where that person, we just had somebody not rescind their application because they make more as an HR generalist in Mount Vernon.
Just yesterday, I received an email withdrawing your application.
This is a problem that we are currently, pardon me if I seem a little passionate about this, but we have to operate this government. And if people around us, it's not the burbs of Columbus that are eating our lunch, it's Centerburg. Danville is close to, not to, not Danville, sorry, Joe, but if Danville is paying our, is paying their service workers a competitive wage, and they have to do less in Danville, what are we doing? We're the county seat. We've got thousands of people moving into this city, 17,000 people that work here, and thousands more people that interface with the city every day. And your response is, well, we'll see. You have to make the tough decisions. If you want to be popular, sell ice cream. Don't work in local government. Now's the time to do it. So to your question, Mr. Miller, where are we on hiring people? It's a process. We got to go back through the civil service system, and then we're hit with another club, which is, we don't pay enough. So we've been looking at it a comprehensive way, which is, we got to compensate people appropriately. We have to have better health benefits, which we have been working tooth and nail with McGowan, Brad Bender, and we're going to have a, a wonderful open enrollment meeting with compensation, boosted compensation packages. That's how you get better morale, because you said it best. You can't just pay people, because somebody can always pay more. We are forced to compete with Columbus, even though we can't. They make more money, they're in driving distance. But you know what? People like to work here, because morale is good. People like working here, but eventually, my God, you got to feed your family. And if you go somewhere else, with the credentialing and the degrees and the experience that these people have, they can walk out the door. My God, at some point, you got to say, I don't blame you. And I'll tell you what, when they do, because somebody asked for it last time, I will make sure, when they, when they do that exit interview, every one of you get a copy. Every one of you. Fiscal sustainability is paramount, because it's the job of this administration, it's a job of this government, to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars. But operational sustainability is equally important, because the people expect us to operate the government. And if you don't have anybody here, why are we even doing?
And I'm past my 20 minutes. So does anybody else have any other comments?
Please do not table.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, I, I can only speak for the departments I met with. They budgeted increases, they budgeted increases. And I think we've, as I said last meeting, we've been kicking the can down the road. I just say, you know, we need to address these salary issues. And it, it can't be just a, a little phase, as I said. Saying things I've said before, but I just want to make sure that that's understood.
Thank you.
Good. One thing.
Yeah.
Instead of an indefinite table, can we table to give us a date, like at the next council meeting? We request that the auditor, the treasurer, and the mayor's office, if need be, we have a special meeting, like we did for the budget appropriations in between, in a public setting, to where we can fully ask questions?
I don't think that gets the study back in time, that...
I don't know that we need the study back. I'm going to borrow your prop.
Yes, ma'am.
But when Clemens Nelson did their report, it was a full packet, and we have one sheet. And I think that some council members, I definitely think that there are positions that need this salary raise, because we are not paying enough in some really vital positions. What I would like to, let me finish. What I would like to see is just how we qualify the individuals for those positions. Some of these, I know right off the bat, make complete sense, because I've met with these individuals. I know their qualifications. I know the work they've done. I know the studying that they have done to earn their certificates and things like that. That is so important, and it should be compensated well, because we want our city to run well. But for the public who is paying for this, we need to be able to say, this person has a degree in their field, like Tanner does. That is why he's at this position. Those are the pieces that I think Clemens Nelson brings in. And they had a packet that they gave to us last time that walked us through how those elements were brought forward. That is the only piece that I see missing from this. I need to know how those numbers were created. But overall, we do have to really make this adjustment. I don't think 3% increases over three years is going to get us there. We'll just be further behind in three years. And I think that the last Safety Service Director suggested that, and council didn't approve it, and we're even further behind.
With all due respect, the 2021 survey that was presented to you was not adopted, and they, they provided a beautiful packet.
That doesn't mean that beating us over the head with a single sheet will help anymore.
Well, it's condensing it down to make the most, you know, simple argument.
Right, it's just, it's a fact sheet. It's a fact sheet.
Yeah. If you want more information, we'll happily provide that. We can provide...
Absolutely.
Provide anything, but I come back to the, we have more questions, and I'm not directing this at any particular individual, but if you have more questions, and they never get answered, I don't know what to do for you.
And Mike, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, one, the Clemens Nelson study for, those are 2020, that's always going to go up. So no, no matter what comes back when it comes back, it will be more than what it was then.
It's getting better.
That's for sure. But I know the, the questions are, is, and, and I've suggested it to several, if we need be, I think tabling it for like, to another date, and then a decision will be made. Like I said, even if it's only two weeks out, we, for the, we had those other meetings. We had a special meeting about Edgewood, an extra meeting that we called short notice. I myself, I have no problem that we call another special meeting. It's a public meeting, and then we can ask direct questions of city administration, treasurer, and auditor.
I might also add, there are more people that work at this city than live on Edgewood Road. But we did three very thorough meetings for that project. They're here, willing to discuss this. They, they work for the people. They serve the people. Hear them out. But if you just say, well, we'll indefinitely table it, we'll indefinitely table it, they've heard this song before. So what are they supposed to do?
Anything for me? That's all. Thank you.
Okay. We're adjourned that committee meeting. We're going to move now to the final committee meeting, which is the Lemon Development CDP with Land Use and Development, Mrs. Keener.
We are having the Lemon Development up for its second reading. We will have a public hearing at its third reading at the next city council meeting. This did go through municipal planning and passed with everyone who was in attendance, I believe, voting yes on this. There, this is on Upper Gilcrest Road. There are... Blah, 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 blah. So this is the P and D that was done up there, and I think everybody has seen the designs. And this is just an opportunity to really talk about if we have questions, so that I can get some answers to that. We will have Jeff Gocke here to speak about this at the next committee meeting, as well as the developer himself. This is something that was anticipated whenever that property came into the city, and Rockford Homes was beginning. I think that this is a good fit for what our community needs, and that this organization has done other developments in the past that have gone well. Does anybody have any questions? Or Jay, do you have anything to add, since you're the second?
No, ma'am, I sat through, excuse me, yes, I do. I sat through municipal planning. And there were questions from the public. I imagine there'll be continued questions from the public. But the developer did do some work, changed the setback, and did some other things. And it was a good presentation. I think in general, it would be good for Mount Vernon. And, you know, other than, we hope that, you know, things like a multi-use path are in the works. That's not necessarily specifically to this development, but that's also in the works along the lines in front of the Rockford Development, connecting that to Keshakton Road, so... But I did sit through both municipal planning meetings in this, and it looks like a, in general, a good plan.
I think there is one unique element of this particular development, and that is that they will not have sidewalks. And Mr. Boren, can you explain why that is for this particular development?
Because it's not a public road. The entire development is private. Meaning, normally, when there'd be a development, the road would be platted, and the city would own the land underneath the road, and on either side of the road, where we would put sidewalks, curb and gutter, things like that. In this development, the, the developer will own all of the property underneath. They're going to then, and because of that, they don't have to build to city standards, and the city will never, ever be responsible for any of the work or rehabilitation or further development of the road.
There will be a three-foot asphalt lane that is divided for a walking path on the road. This is something that I've talked with ADF about, because they work a lot with the developers that come in. And this might be something that we have brought up in the zoning discussion. Because I think that sidewalks are important. They continue to be important for the city to have a complete streets program. And I think that that might be something that we want to address in the future with developments. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. There were several questions, is, is there going to be a homeowners association? These are apartment, these are rental apartments. These aren't, they're not going to be condos. So that was brought up in the plan as well. And as Ms. Keener said, there aren't, and I would have preferred there to have been raised, separated sidewalk, but there will be a walking path on the asphalt. So there will be places for pedestrian, multimodal. Would have preferred sidewalk, but I don't always get everything I want.
And these are still ADA compliant, just to note that. So I don't know that they are preferred for the look of what the city is going for in the future. It's just my concern there. So does anybody have any questions that I can maybe answer?
I just, I have a general comment related to the cost to rent. So let me give you an example. I just read somewhere in the last week that the Rockford apartments are going to be $1,000 or $1,200. And we were sold that those were going to be $800 for a single unit and $1,000 for a double. But now I read that it's $1,000 for a single and $1,200. And I understand the cost to increase, but when, when a developer is coming to municipal planning or to us, they need to project what it's going to cost by the time they're building and people are walking in the door with a key. And I think that that is unethical. Because the, the cost for, for somebody to pay $800 versus $1,000 is, is huge for a young kid that just got out of college. So I don't know where Lemon Development is on this, on their projection of these costs, but I want truth. And that, that, that's coming out tonight. I expect transparency and truthfulness when I'm on this seat. And I'm not getting it all the time. And that's starting to frustrate me, frankly, as a council member. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Just clarification, since this passed municipal planning, in order for city council to turn it down, it takes six, six of the seven people here. It takes a three-fourth majority to turn it down. And that's the reason we have P and Ds. So P and Ds come back to city council as you make different adjustments and changes to it. And that's where we got into the discussion out on, on Vernon View. It wasn't a P and D, oh, they're rating it. And so it wasn't coming back to city council every time. So it's a different, different thing. But remember, it takes six of, of you to turn this down. And I'm not hearing that tonight, but that's, there, there are questions. We will have a public hearing at our next meeting. That being said, we're adjourning the Land Use and Development Committee. We're now in recess until 7:30 PM, when we begin the legislative portion of the meeting. We're now in recess until 7:30 PM when we begin the legislative portion of the meeting.
Now 7:30 PM, we're going to call the legislative portion of the April 8th meeting of Mount Vernon City Council order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Siebel.
Here.
Mr. Severance.
Here.
Mr. Mahan.
Here.
We are in session. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Roger Tickle. And please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. Pastor?
Again, as always, thank you so much for giving us the privilege of being able to come up here and do this.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's pray. Father, as we gather together tonight and we convene to meet and whatever business is going on, Lord, I pray that, Father, that integrity will prevail. I pray, Father, that cool heads and cool thoughts will be in charge. I pray, Lord, that you'll guide, you'll just guide everybody as they do their business, Lord. I thank you for the people that are willing to step into political, especially these days when things can get so tense. And I just pray, Father, that you'll give wisdom, you'll give courage. And I pray at the end of the day that the business that's being done, it'll just, it'll help the greater good. And Father, we thank you for the privilege of serving you. And I pray, Father, that you'll just be with this meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, in your packets were the minutes from the March 25th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Now I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So move. Second.
Can move in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There are none.
Counsel, in your packets were the committee reports from the last meeting. I see no liquor control licenses or proclamations. We do have several people wanting to speak on matters of city concern. The first one is Dave Culbertson from Arms of Angel Foundation. Mr. Culbertson, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Thank you. Dave Culbertson, 9000 Martinsburg Road, Mount Vernon. I'm here representing Arms of an Angel Foundation. And for those that are not familiar with our foundation, it's our family's foundation. In 2009, we lost our firstborn son Carl to an accidental heroin overdose. And we formed a foundation to help bring awareness of prescription drugs and other drug abuses and modern drug issues. And the first nine or 10 years, all of that was directed to speaking to high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, church youth groups, to try to spread awareness and to parents groups. And the latter time more that we've done, we've been doing fundraising throughout the whole thing. And people in the community have been fantastic. And I'm here to present the results of the latest fundraising that we've had. Chief, could you come up?
Yes, sir.
This is a donation, and about half of this is from fundraisers that we just had. And others are from schoolchildren in classrooms and other people in the community that have donated nickels, dimes, and dollars or whatever to our cause. And all the funds are handled by the Knox County Foundation. But this is a donation for Boss, Boss, our new canine in the community. And the first canine, this will be the fifth canine we've raised money for between Knox Sheriff's Department and Police Department. And one of the first ones is just retired. And this is a check from Arms of an Angel Foundation for $15,000 for Boss. And in addition to this, Dina and the Woodward Opera House and the Community Jazz Concert raised another 1,650. They came up, the Concert Association came up with their, they wanted to do something, and God bless them. So together, we've got close to $17,000 for Boss.
Yeah.
Griffin Grand.
Thank you. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, Dave, and to your foundation. Much appreciated. There's several people wanting, also wanting to speak on matters of public concern. We are going to limit the talks tonight to four minutes because we have so many. Please come to the podium and state your name and address and limit your comments to four minutes. The first one is Lisa Brown on wages. Lisa?
Hi. Good evening. Lisa Brown, 18441 Keck Road, Butler. I am currently serving as the tax administrator for the city. And I just want to let my concern be known that the wages everybody here tonight is very well-deserving. And we all feel like this has been kicked down. We keep being told you're going to be compensated, and it never comes about. And it's getting tiresome of hearing that. And Columbus isn't that far for any of us to drive. And we don't want to drive to Columbus, but we feel, you know, we keep getting pushed along. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next is Todd Hill for counsel.
Yes, good evening. Todd Hill, 20469 Schaefer Road, Fredericktown, Middlebury Township. I don't want to sing for my supper here, but, and I don't mean this as a threat either. However, if this ordinance that is before me, that for you, that refers to my current pay is kicked down the road, my resumes will be going out tomorrow. There is a suburb of Columbus that needs a city council clerk presently, right now. I have eight years of experience in two cities, and I would literally double my pay. As Tanner has said many times, we cannot compete with the suburbs of Columbus. What is before you is not doubling, anywhere near doubling my pay. I don't have a lot of expenses. I don't, I drive a Chevy Equinox. I live in a 124-year-old farmhouse with, that's mostly paid off, actually. I don't have any alimony. I don't have any kids. I have a puppy that's five months old. She doesn't cost very much. I, since I've taken this job three years ago, I have struggled to maintain the level of my expenses. I've taken out a loan for $10,000. I have rated my investments half a dozen times for about another $15,000 just to pay the bills so I can stay in this job. Now, this is not a threat. Obviously, I'm replaceable. Everybody is replaceable. You can probably find someone better at this than I am. I can tell you that Maureen Hall, who would be the assistant clerk, really doesn't want this job. I can't imagine why. But frankly, speaking totally honestly, I don't mind this job. I like it. It's fine. I like the mayor. I like council. I like everybody on council, including the previous council. And if we were in a situation, meaning the city, where we were in the red, as my previous employer is right now, I would probably be making the same decision tomorrow. So this is not a threat. I have to do what I have to do. So that's just my situation. So I am not urging you to do anything or not to do anything. I'm just telling you where I stand, and I appreciate you hearing me. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next, we have Deanna Hess-McKenzie.
Thank you, counsel. Deanna Hess-McKenzie, 11890 Shank Creek Road in Howard, Howard Township. I can't in good conscience sit in the galley and not speak up. If I'm going to get on stage at the Woodward Opera House and say, "I am proud of this city. I am proud to be here and welcome folks from other cities to our town." I have to stand up for the people that make our city what it is. I've never one time had to call a first responder and have them say, "We don't have enough staff. They're on the other end of town. Can you just hold on?" If you don't pay them for the jobs they're doing, we are going to have positions unfilled. That's just a fact. People can go elsewhere to work. Our city is what it is because of our leadership, because of our city employees, because we have folks that are willing to stand up and speak for what is right, to stand up and support. I see police officers, firefighters, city administration workers who work more than the hours that they are paid to work already. Not one time have you asked of them anything that they have not done. If you don't ask, they cannot do because they do not know. Every single time a request has gone before them, it has been fulfilled. I am proud of this city. I am proud of what we stand for. And I do urge you not to kick this down the road again. It's taxpayers that you want to have an answer for. It's taxpayers that are saying to you, "Pay our people so that they can stay here." I am one of those. There's not a doubt in my mind that even at the raise they're requesting, it's not sufficient for what they do. So I do urge you to change your mind on tabling this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Quentin Platt.
Good evening, counsel. Quentin Platt, 122 North McKenzie Street here in Mount Vernon, Ohio. I just want to preface by saying that I am born and raised in Mount Vernon. And working for the city was always kind of a dream job when I became an engineer, especially after I got to meet Brian and I saw how much fun the engineering department had and the kind of projects that they were involved with. However, when the opportunity came up and I was given an offer, I ended up taking over a 10% pay cut going from private consulting into the public sector. The trade-off was that I went from a one-hour drive to a 10-minute walk to work. And I got to work in the community that raised me. So I was happy taking that. Since I was hired, I have received 3% in raises or adjustments, meaning that I'm still not making anywhere near what I was making two years ago in private consulting. And since I started, the Consumer Price Index calculation for inflation has been nearly 8%, meaning getting a 3% raise with 8% inflation means I effectively have less buying power now than I did two years ago when I first started this job. So I'd like to encourage you just to consider the time value of money and the fact that the longer that we wait and the less that we give to our employees, the less likely we are going to be able to hire them. One of the main things that was brought up was that we need to be able to have a compensation that we can replace people at. You are not going to find somebody that meets the minimum qualifications of my job that will do it for the salary that is currently on file. I guarantee it. You had two applicants when I applied. I only knew about it and applied because this is my hometown and I'm crazy about this job. Three applicants, I'm sorry. I can guarantee you will get zero applicants if you post my job today. If I were to leave tomorrow, and I'm not saying that I would, but I could very easily be making much more in private consulting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Light.
Hello. My name is Chris Light, 19320 Baker Road. For those of you who don't know me, I have an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree of accounting. And I'm also an elected official myself. I'm a fiscal officer for a township. So I completely understand how you need to be fiscally responsible when you are looking at wage adjustments. Originally, I worked in the auditor's office for eight years and transferred to the police department. I transferred to the police department on August 1st, and my previous position has still not been filled, and it's been months. I'm not going to make any assumptions on why that is true, but I would like to think that it's probably a lot to do with the income. When I was deciding to transfer without looking, I had three job offers. One with the county, so it was the same retirement system. One with a financial institution, and one was a work-at-home position with a full-time income. I chose to stay with the city because I really like the people. I like working for the people. I can't really speak for my counterparts, but I'm going to speak a little bit. From personal experience, I feel really disappointed that the wage adjustments are not being taken into consideration and thought about in the long term. My son was an employee for the city for about nine months with the fire department. And he was offered a job at Columbus and he left. I could leave too. I don't want to, but wages are a big deal. And I know that my counterparts, all of the executive secretaries, those are skilled positions. Many of them probably have certificates. They have loads of experience. It's not something that you can replace really easily off the street with somebody. It takes some skill. And I think, I just feel always left behind. When I started, my wage was $17.50. I took it because I wanted the 12-minute drive. I didn't want the hour commute. But I had enough school hours that I could set for my CPA. That was a decision I made to not do. But it just is very frustrating to not have wage increases, not necessarily increases, an adjustment to put us to where some of the counterparts and fellow cities are making. Newark is not that far away. I'm from Licking County area. I could look there if I really wanted to change. I love the police department and I love the people that I work with. But wages at some point are a huge consideration for people. Food is not getting cheaper. Gas is not getting cheaper. Housing is not getting cheaper. What are we supposed to do if our employer won't take care of us? And that's not a threat. It's just, what are we supposed to do? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Burns.
Thank you, Andrew Burns, 5 North Gay Street. I'm the captain of the police department. And again, also, I don't take anything that anyone has said here tonight as threats, but I will tell you that there is a dire situation. What is happening right now, and the police department finds itself in a particularly troublesome situation. If we think back over the last four years, we saw a defunding movement nationwide. Now, that didn't reach Mount Vernon, and I'll tell you how I know that. Because when I go out, I can't go out to a public place in this city because of our community, our wonderful community. Here's what they do. They almost make me violate policy. I'm not allowed to take gratuities. So when I go to South Side, I have to be very careful that the public doesn't buy my food. That's how much they support the police. And here's what drives that, because especially in an atmosphere like that, we have clientele that go home and they watch the mainstream media. And they say, "Oh, my goodness, what is happening in this country? I don't feel this way about the police. Why are people doing this?" The only way they knew to really address that on their own and show their support is by saying, "I'm going to pay for that officer's meal." Our officers experience all the time through drive-throughs and at sit-down diners. And again, it's not anything that we promote or that we encourage, but sometimes they find a way to be sneaky, and they can do this. That speaks to our community. When I talk to counsel, when I hear counsel, I know that a majority of you understand what's happening in the police department. About maybe a little more than half of you are always at our promotions, always come to our swearing-ins. I have spent the last four-plus years inviting each and every one of you. Some of you have your finger on the pulse, and for that, I am deeply appreciative. Others do not. So when I hear the objections, I see the recoiling at percentages. I see the insistence on terms being embedded into the conversation that don't apply. It's always veiled with, "What will my constituents think?" And so my question for you is, what will your constituents think when we can't respond to calls? And that's not being dramatic. For those of you who don't come to the police department, who don't reach out and ask questions, who don't attend. By the way, there's about three members here that actually sit on one of our biggest outreach committee boards and help plan the events. So we have overwhelming support, even in city administration. There are others of you who refuse to have any type of dialogue with us, any interaction with us. When your constituents ask us why we can't respond to their calls... When your constituents ask us why we can't respond to their calls, I know what to tell them. I know who's responsible. And I'm not saying that to be dramatic. We had a test last week. So does anybody on council know how many people took our test for an entry-level police officer? Is there anyone from this point in the room forward who knows? None of you know? Fascinating. Well, let me put it into context. When I tested in 2001, I competed with 59 other candidates for five positions. The answer is two. Two people showed up to our test. We had the first interview today. The young woman came in and gave us the shortest interview I've ever been part of. It lasted about seven minutes. When she realized that she couldn't immediately be put into a school as a school resource officer, she said, "I have to be upfront with you," very polite, and she would have been a wonderful asset. Double majors next month from the NAS. We would have loved to have taken this further with her. She said, "I'm going to be honest with you. I see what they do to police. I see the news. I know what people say. I'm not doing it. I am not going to be a police officer. I don't want to be a patrol officer." And so she had to walk out the door. Again, very polite, very nice. We were very disappointed. We have one candidate for that test that we hope to interview next week. That candidate does not have an academy.
Please conclude your time.
I won't take any more of your time. A dire warning, we are careening towards a crisis in public safety. Please, make sure you understand. Your constituents deserve to know that, and I, for one, will be very happy to explain to them why. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Terry Davis.
My name is Terry Davis, 18801 Freytown Amity Road, Freytown, Ohio. I've worked for the city for 27 years. Andy Burns, I used to ride with him. I'm a police officer also. I'm an auxiliary police officer. Andy and I used to do patrol. When I took my test, there was 131. And when we take the test now, there's lucky to be a dozen for the fire department. Everybody wants to be a hero. That's the fire department job. Now, besides that, the fire department, we stress Mount Vernon is the seat of Knox County. It's the seat. We stress in training that we want the other departments to look to Mount Vernon as how to do things, why we do things, and what's next. And I got news for all of you guys. That's going away. Tanner, he hit it. Why should I go work for Mount Vernon and take 6,000 runs when I can go to Danville and take half that? I can go to Fredericktown and take less than half of that. Or I can go leave out and go to the edge of Columbus or, you know, 45 minutes from here and take a third of that and make 30,000 more. I've had offers, Washington Township, New Albany, that doubles my salary here. I'm one of those guys that said, "I grew up here. I love this town, and this is where I'm from, and I want to work here." I don't pursue those other departments because I want to stay here. It's close to home. I know I have a great working relationship with all the contractors, all of the buildings that go on, all the new construction, the new businesses. I deal with all of them. Nobody's afraid to call the fire department and ask me questions. Every one of you, with the exception of maybe a few of you new, call me and ask me questions whenever you want to know the answer. If I don't know it, I'll find out and I'll get back with you. I'm not afraid. Now, again, Mount Vernon is the seat of the county. We want everybody to come here and work. We want them to desire to come here and work. This doesn't affect me. I'm not one of the guys that's going to get the wage adjustment. But I agree with Mr. Hill. I'll go into retirement and go work part-time, and then somebody else can deal with the stuff that I deal with. Centerburg, you hit it. Centerburg makes $25,000 more than I make, and they've got maybe 150, 200 businesses. We have over 1,000 businesses. Yeah, we have more than one inspector, but the crews can't do inspections because they're out taking the 6,000-plus runs. And again, my cousin, don't kick the can down the road. And again, that's it. That's all I got to say. Don't kick the can down the road.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Pritchard.
Karen Pritchard, 389 North Main Street, Fredericktown. One thing this evening, when I was sitting in this meeting, it occurred to me when I heard somebody say, "Oh, wait a minute. I heard something unethical perhaps." And that was that they were going to raise the rent at some of the new apartments by not one, but $200. From 800 to 1,000, from 1,000 to 1,200. I immediately said to the people sitting in front of me and beside me, "Well, that's the difference in where I could live, working for the city of Mount Vernon." I don't mean that as a slap in anybody's face. I just mean it honestly. $200, folks, makes a difference. Now, I would like for you all to do one thing for me tonight. If you're a left-handed person, if you're a lefty, just raise your pointer finger on your left hand. If you're a right-handed person, raise your pointer finger on your right hand. I want every person on council to do this. Come on, Tammy. Do I see it?
No, that's fine. I'll wait.
No, I want to see your finger because this is important. Because I heard you, Ms. Woods, say, "You're waiting on more data. You're waiting on more paper to come to you to see statistics." It doesn't take more paper. It takes a finger. Because everybody here can click. Everybody can go and visit some of our neighboring communities, Ms. Woods, and we can see what salaries are. We all know what they are. And I don't know that there's any one of you sitting here tonight that has not picked up maybe perhaps old-style newspaper, read it online, and said, "Darn if the law director's office hasn't nailed it again. They have put somebody where they needed to be." And that is perhaps incarceration, perhaps with the probation department. Do you want to know how that wheel gets started, people? It gets started with Captain Burns's folks going out, making contact. Do you want to know where it ends? It ends with the law director, the assistant law director. Ms. Whitney is grossly underpaid, grossly underpaid with her law degree. Stephen Potts, grossly underpaid. I guarantee you that the love that Ms. Whitney has for this community far extends anybody that is sitting on this council tonight. And I will take that to the bank. I guarantee that when I had an opportunity to meet with our wonderful HR director, the words out of my mouth when we were just briefly discussing that said, out of my own mouth, "Forgo my raise and give it to Brittany Whitney." I share my pot with Brittany. That's how much I trust what she's doing for our community. I don't know if you ever read the statistics about how many people are incarcerated, how many people make it through probation, how many people finish their drug and alcohol. Do you know how that happens? Because Rob and Brittany and Steve make it happen. I am proud to be a part of the law director's office. And I come from a background of being the staunchy librarian. But I am proud to be a part of an office who holds people accountable. And it is time. It's not a wage increase, Ms. Woods, not one bit. It is getting what I deserve because I'm that good at what I do. And they are that good at what they do. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Tom Hinkel, Director of Public Works. And yeah, I put 40 public squares in my address. That wasn't my mistake. Physically, yeah, I'm not here all the time, but mentally, constantly. It's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week job. Not just me. I'm sure many others are the same way. I know my assistant directors are for the Public Works Department. But I appreciate the opportunity to explain some things to you tonight about where I come from and where my department and what we do and where I think we're headed. Like Captain Burns stated earlier, our civil service numbers are way down. When I say way down, I mean it's crazy. When I took the test in 2003, there was close to 100, if not more than 100, people that took the service exam at that time. We just recently done it this year. We had nine people take the test. They are not lining up out the doors to come to work here anymore. It's really hard to get qualified people. And our department requires a lot of skilled, not to put any other departments down, but skilled trade kind of tech, you know, whether you can do concrete, plumbing, electrical, you know, whatever it is, operate machinery. We can't even come close to competing with construction companies in today's world, not even close. We're lucky if we get, you know, somebody that's first starting out, maybe doesn't have a lot of experience in a lot of the work, and the minute they gain it, yeah, we're in jeopardy of losing them pretty quick. We, right now, currently, we had a position, I'm sorry, we had a position that opened up in my assistant director of the Parks Department. It's not, hadn't been a secret. We lost somebody and we had to replace, we did some moving around and replaced him in our street department, and then we needed a new one for the Parks Department. We reached out to the outside to see about getting candidates to bring in for many reasons. I, you know, was looking for, you know, some fresh airs, you know, somebody with different ideas of how to deal with our park systems and bring new ideas to the table. And well, let's just say we had success on applicants, but I don't know, I'm not sure if the ad read, "Please make sure you ask about negotiating the wage." Because every one of them wanted to negotiate that wage. It was, we didn't get anybody hired from the outside, to be honest with you. Now, this is not a cut to the current person that took the position, but it really opened my eyes. We're not competitive at all out there. I want to leave you with this thought. If we can't get to the point to where we can do a compensation for the people we have, if we can't retain people, if we're not able to replace people with the knowledge and the skill that we need, you're going to pay the salary adjustment. It just might not be to the city staff. And what I mean by that, if I can't get skilled people to do these jobs, these, our responsibilities won't stop. Things won't quit breaking around here. We'll have to get them fixed. If I have to reach out to contractors to do a lot of the work because I can't get the skilled people in here to perform them, you're going to pay that salary adjustment. It's just not to them. Because I guarantee this, believe me when I tell you, the contractors have made these wage adjustments, so they've got the quality type of people they need to do this kind of work. So I ask you, please do not table this. Think hard on it, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next, we have the chief.
Yes, Chief, Robert Morgan. My name is Robert Morgan. I'm Mount Vernon Police Chief, and my address is 5 North Gay Street, Mount Vernon, Ohio. Hope that is sufficient. With the exception of, I believe, two people in this room, I've worked at the city of Mount Vernon longer than anyone in this room. And over the years, I have been on negotiating committees for police officers, and then as my position of chief, I have negotiated for contracts with our officers. This has been a point of contention for the last 25 years, that the city of Mount Vernon is behind other cities. And we kept getting answers like, "Well, our comparables are average or just below average, and that's what we need to focus on." You're good. You're just below average. When has the city of Mount Vernon ever advertised itself, "Come to Mount Vernon. We're average. Come to the average city of Mount Vernon." Okay? No, we're an above-average town. We're above-average town because of the people that live here, and we are an above-average town because of the people that keep our town running and working, every one of these folks. Okay? There's people out here that do jobs I wouldn't want to do. I'm not going to climb through sewer pipes. Okay? Some of them don't want to get called at 3 o'clock in the morning because somebody blew their head off. That's what I get. Okay? I've heard a lot of statements out here, tired of kicking the can down the road. This can's been being kicked down the road for 25 years that I have been here. Okay? We suffered through the 0% raises, the 1% raises when we do our contracts. Another thing nobody is partaking in consideration is if you move this farther down the road, we are very close to doing contract negotiations. Now, this is for the non-unionized employees and the supervisory staff. If you realize, though, that we have to negotiate our contracts with our union employees coming up very soon, okay? I had an individual that did not take our captain's test because he says, "I don't want a pay cut. I have lost people to other departments. I know we will never be able to pay suburb of Columbus money." And yes, I have a significant amount to gain by this legislation, which puts me on par, barely on par with most of my peers, whereas I was way far behind, barely on par. Currently, my salary is at the fourth percentile for the average police chief pay in the city in the state of Ohio, the fourth percentile. This pay increase, in my case, doesn't quite take me to the 50th percentile. You folks are, every time I turn, we want more information. We want more information. We want more numbers. We want more numbers. I have been open and honest. I'm not going to point anybody out. I have had people that I have begged to come ride with us at the police department that have never done a ride-along, that have never come into my office and sit down and ask me a question, never picked up a phone and asked me a question. Okay? I keep hearing, "We want more information. We want more information." Ask for it, and it will be given to you. We will give you information. My office is an open book. Come ride with us. Those of you that have, and those of you who are involved in our programs, I'm grateful to you. We do things like go out, we funded an $18,000 K-9, and it cost the city of Mount Vernon not one penny. How did we do that? Because of the good relationship we have with the citizens of Mount Vernon and what they want to have for us. Okay? I will leave you with a last thought. Somebody told me a long time ago, an old crusty police chief who was here for over 40 years, and I watched him struggle with getting compensated as well as he should have been as police chief. I looked at him and said, "Man, chief, I love this job." And he said, "You know what? You can love the job, but sometimes the job won't love you back." Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for city council to love their employees back.
Thank you, Chief.
Do not table this legislation. Keep it going forward.
Thank you. Next, we have Chief Christopher.
Good evening. First off, thank you for everybody that showed up, especially my department. Really appreciate it. I think, other than Brian and I, I think we're the longest-tenure department heads of the city, so it really means a lot to the department heads, seeing everybody come out and their support. So I really appreciate that. But so first, I'd like to take the opportunity to say thank you to the administration for advocating on behalf of the department heads and our support staff. I'd also like to thank city council for your time and consideration. We come to you tonight not only as public servants, but as employees of the city of Mount Vernon. As public servants, we love what we do. We take pride in serving and assisting our fellow citizens. But as employees, we do not want to be held back or held back from comparable wages just because we are public servants. What is the first solution that comes to mind when you think about retaining good employees, building a positive culture, and improving morale? What do you think of when you think about investing in the city employees? When I talk to our crews, I tell them that there are three things that we can control. We can control our energy, our effort, and our attitude. As we stand here tonight, I believe the city council has the control for the city's future energy, effort, and attitude. Today, I had a conversation, this is real, today I had a conversation with a employee in my office, giving me a heads-up that another fire department will be reaching out to me about his employment. This unfortunately is too common. The main reason of his considering leaving the department is wages. Tonight's vote is not about union employees' wages, but it represents a movement in a positive direction and shows that we value the work of our city employees. Most of you have heard the Most of you have heard the saying used by former Ohio State football coach, Urban Meyer, E plus R equals O. Event plus response equals outcome. Tonight, we are able to start changing the culture by valuing our city employees, which in return will trickle down and pay dividends throughout each and every city department. I do understand that responses to events are not easy to make, but we all strive for a positive outcome. I hope the city tonight will support these wage adjustments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finally, the final one is Brian Ball.
Brian Ball, 40 Public Square. Thanks, Honorable Chairman, for this time. Infrastructure is the life support system of dense living. This staff works 24 hours a day, 366 days this year, to keep these systems operational. May not have noticed, Mr. Alberts left the room to go fix the air conditioning, so you can be comfortable. You may not have noticed, the fire department left the room to respond to a call and came back, and they're ready to respond again. Lacy and I meet with developers. Occasionally, the developers say, we have watched your city council, and we do not want to move our business to this town. This meeting is broadcast to the world. The developers are looking, sometimes they walk away. Your decisions are important. For this group of people, and this group of people, the county taxes are already due. We have had to pay half of our taxes. The union had an automatic small pay adjustment for all three unions. You have had a pay increase. My staff, the non-union people that are in the command center of this city, have had to pay their taxes. I've heard a lot of significant adjustments in taxes by the county. We don't have a say in that. We've asked for, hey, why is it so much? But at a certain point, you know, the rents are going up, the taxes are going up. The other thing, the question was asked, so I don't think there's a mystery here. We presented a budget that was approved. My budget has $50,000 more in it than I'm asking for, for the raises, because we have a potential of adding a staff person that obviously will be kicked down the road. My budget is fully funded to cover all the raises that the HR department and the administration. So if there's a question about that, these numbers are not secret, they were presented, and they have been voted on. There was a line-by-line presentation, it's been approved. So I am confused where we have budgeted. Those budgets have been voted on and approved. This is an administrative step to confirm or make small adjustments, there's room for We're doing this project on Stumpa Northview where we're income qualifying people. During that process, we realized that Mr. Jason Epley would qualify for federal aid for a sewer extension if he lived inside the project area. So at $31 an hour with four members of his family, he is in a category that would qualify for federal aid based on his family income. I think that's embarrassing for an Assistant Director level. There is a lot of work to be done. We ask that you share in the work. As we took the utility director's salary to 20, no, 19 readings by the previous council, our current utility director, our assistant directors, have had to do a lot of cleanup where we had vacancies, we had temporary directors, we honestly hired the wrong person. We have been in court toe-to-toe with the senior lawyers of the Ohio EPA. There is a then-and-now that was a mistake that was made by a temporary director that's not here anymore. We are still cleaning up the problems from the last round of incorrect salary adjustments. I rest my case.
Thank you. That concludes the people speaking on matters of city concern. We'll now move the legislative portion of the meeting. Council before you, and your, is your packet. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I'll assume it's approved by consensus. We have no resolutions tonight for third reading. We have one for second reading, that's resolution number 2024-37. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-37, a resolution approving the PND Comprehensive Development Plan as submitted by Lemon Development and approved by the Mount Vernon Municipal Planning Commission for parcel number 71-0050, 00050.000 on Upper Gilchrist Road, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will have its second reading tonight, and we will have the public hearing at the next council meeting.
This resolution receives a second reading. We now move the resolutions for first reading, the first one is resolution number 2024-39. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-39, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-39 to its third and final reading.
Second.
We move a second for suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-39.
Second.
We move a second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Mr. Scott, we have some money to move around, don't we?
Actually, we have new resources coming into the city's treasury, not anticipated at the beginning of the calendar year. So we appreciate all of these resources coming in at this time. The first one is a PAC United program that everyone is familiar with. We have some private donations going into this program for $125.
Not enough, let's go to a bigger amount.
Okay, it's just a little too small. Item two for you is the Victims of Crime Act grant in, from the law director's, excuse me, law director's office, for a grant in the amount of $16,518. Again, this is a program that we have had extensively with the law director's office, and we hope that we're able to continue with this. This is only a portion of what's going to happen in the rest of the calendar year for this department. Item three, insurance trust. The chief of, the fire chief and I had a conversation this past week on a property at 10 Miller Avenue that had a fire structure. And for those who you may not be aware of, that the city does have an ordinance filed with the Insurance Commissioner of the state of Ohio in regards to where a structure may have suffered as a fire. In doing so, part of the insurance proceeds are set forth back to the city in the event that the property owner does not make the site safe, secure for the public. In this particular case, $43,600 came to us in regards to the retainer. Chief has now looked at the site, indicated that it is safe and secure for the public, and will be returning the funds back to the insured for, on Friday, for the amount of $43,600. Item four, again, we're back into PAC United. I just can't talk enough about this particular program, and I enjoy doing it on behalf of those who work with this program. Another one for $500, and this was a grant that the police department from ODNR actually was provided to us, we applied last year, but the funds obviously were not available, but they did go ahead and grant the grant to us for this program, so we're going to add another 500. So we're going to get there, Mrs. Seville, it's just going to take us some smaller steps. And in regards, items five and six have to do with water and utility liens and stormwater. We just received $66,354 in utilities liens that will be applied to the customers' accounts, and with that also, we have auditors deductions in the amount of $205. This concludes this, thank you, Mrs. Seville.
Great, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Any other questions?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024-40. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-40, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon, the pay bills pursuant to section 5705.41D, then-and-now certification.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-40 to its third and final reading.
Second.
We move a second for suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-40.
Second.
We move a second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Now, we're going to spend a lot of money, huh?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Seville and council. These are items for then-and-now for which purchase orders were not incurred prior to making the acquisition of the purchases. We have seven of those listed here. Wade and Gatten Nursery for $4,000, Palmer &amp; Sons in the amount of $61,884, Zashin &amp; Rich for $5,000, Pelton Environmental Products in the amount of $8,000, Otis Elevator for $3,434.04, Bonded Chemicals for $3928.30, Anticor in Maine, an allocation between two line accounts, a total of $15,390. All of these are pending for payment at this time, Mrs. Seville.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So when were these, when were we billed for these?
Could have been anytime.
So are these like in 2023?
No, these will all be in 2024.
These are just in 2024.
2024, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024-41. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-41, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an interlocal contract with the Houston Galveston Area Council, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-41 to its third and final reading.
Second.
We move a second for suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I would move to adopt resolution number 2024-41.
Second.
We move a second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Hello, Tanner.
Hi.
Would you like to talk about this?
Sure, I'll be brief. This is, in the way that we do public bidding in Ohio, we also have the option to do what was often called a co-op plan. This is extending that option for a co-op plan, so we can utilize this particular program to find, in particular, a leaf machine, as you see often around the ball, but this will just expand our options when we're looking at purchasing assets for the city.
Last year, council had us, allowed us to join Sourcewell, which is another government cooperative purchasing group, and that saved us some significant sums.
That allows us to move forward more quickly and save that, save that money. So similarly to Sourcewell, this is another, other type of Sourcewell.
Sounds good. Anybody have a question?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024-42. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-42, a resolution approving the reappointment of Lacy Philkins to the Historical Review Commission of the city of Mount Vernon, Ohio, for a one-year term, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution 2024-42 to its third and final reading. Second.
We move a second for suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution 2024-42. Second.
We move a second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Mr. May.
Thank you, councilwoman and council. Lacy Philkins is, this is going on, I think, her third term with the Historical Review Commission. She is, everybody knows her, she's with experience at Mount Vernon, she lives on High Street. While she may be outside of the historical district per se, she does possess a great deal of historical review knowledge from her, from her degree, so that's why we liked her as, and she's willing to continue in that role.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Final resolution for this evening is resolution number 2024-43. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-43, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the city of Mount Vernon, Ohio, to acquire by any means authorized by RC 735.05A 2023, A 2023 Chevrolet Silverado work truck, NAP Hyde utility vehicle, for the Water and Wastewater Department, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-43 to its third and final reading.
Second.
We move a second for suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hill.
No, me.
I'm sorry.
I move to adopt a resolution number 2024-43.
Second.
We move a second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Tanner, are we going to sell a Silverado work truck?
No, we're going to acquire one. And I got to be honest, when I first read this, I thought it said, acquire by any means necessary, and I thought, I don't want the truck that bad.
No.
So, yeah, so we're, yeah, they might, actually. So, yeah, so whatever happens, Janice, it's out of my hands.
It's out of your hands, huh? Well, you got an awful lot of paperwork here for it, so I thought you must have wanted it pretty bad.
It's hard to get a truck these days, so that's what we're doing.
Any other discussion?
It's, it's, they agreed to match state bid price, which is why we're doing it this way.
Buzz Killington over there says that we should match state price.
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, and now we move to ordinances. We have ordinances for third reading. The first one is ordinance number 2024-13, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024-13, an ordinance creating the Mount Vernon Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund Board and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayhem.
Counsel, we had a, this is a surging, we had a committee meeting on this. The chief explained two weeks ago, it needs to go through. Do we have any questions?
Don't you have to put it on the floor?
What are the mechanics, this, sir, once we?
Did you make a motion?
Well. I apologize. I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024-13. I got ahead of myself. Thank you.
Second.
And move in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Mayhem.
Counsel, we had a committee meeting about this two weeks ago. The chief explained what was going on, something we need to go forward on. What are the mechanics of this, sir?
After the council adopts it, you have to provide it to the state, is that correct?
Oh, to the fire marshal's.
Fire Marshal's office. And once that happens, then council will need to appoint their members. The fire department will appoint their members, and they'll go from there. There is a claim currently pending, is that right?
Yeah, we, we pay, we already pay into it, into the fund. If this happens, with two council, two fire department, then one outside person. So once this gets adopted, we'll form that, form that group, then we have to report that needed information to the fire marshal's office.
Questions?
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2024-14, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance fixing the number, wages, and benefits of hourly non-bargaining unit employees of the City of Mount Vernon effective January 1, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. I move to postpone ordinance 2024-14 to the May 13th meeting.
Can I make a motion?
Well, there's, we need a second. Is there, the next will be a second, is, will there be a second?
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
And discussion on, on the, on the motion.
Thank you. So let, let's do have a discussion here. So Terry, can I ask you to step up to the podium here for a second? So I want to start with this question. Standing here tonight, can you tell us that we can afford these two ordinances? As the.
Before I answer your question, I'd like to have a question answered, if you will. Do we understand and know the difference between Section 1 and Section 2?
Of the ordinance 2024-14? Because those typically haven't been separate ord, sections, have they?
This is correct.
Are you asking why? The, the HR director would be the person to answer that question.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what is it?
In ordinance 2024-14.
What's the difference between the two rates? Section 1 and Section 2, they have different amounts?
Those two have normally been under one section.
Why did, it's because of the way you did the questions, why the two sets, why they're two different sets? Why is one different than the other?
Help me understand what you mean by this. I'm sorry.
Section 1, starting with 2, they're different here, why are they two different?
Are you referring to someone specifically, or what are you?
No, no, it's, this group, one group has, sorry, one group has a different starting. It's because of the way, whenever you sent them out to be.
Right, each position was evaluated.
I'm sorry, well, let me pull it in specific.
These have normally been under one section. So would it be accurate that the fire department executive secretary and the Office of Law Director, legal assistants, have been pulled out and their rate has increased more than the others? Is that?
Correct, yeah. They were evaluated and there was a different ranking, yes.
Did that answer your question, Terry?
Sure.
To answer your question, Mrs. Woods, I have not actually calculated these, although I would believe to think that they would, there are, they have been adjusted, and the amounts could be various between the categories to know for sure which, how much in each category was increased. Mrs. Neff, could you assist us in determining what your calculations were?
I'm, I'm sorry. Can I interject?
No, what?
It's council's meeting.
In trying to determine.
Fair enough, it's, it's our legislation. So you're asking our HR director to do the job of appropriations and the job of the auditor?
Absolutely not. Terry asked the question, what increases each of these are, to answer the question if it's affordable, if it's in the budget.
Well, in fairness, that's your job.
How is it his job when, to determine what she increases?
Say that again.
How is it his job to determine what rate she used to increase these?
What rate she used to increase it?
Yeah, these have been increased separately. These are normally together, and one group was increased at a different rate.
Are you saying these two sections are normally together, or these pieces of legislation are together?
The, the issue is that they used to be all one group. One of them has an additional 20 cents.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the, all of the job descriptions were sent out to an outside firm.
That is correct.
That scored them, and that, and they came back and said, these ones score at this rate.
Correct.
These ones score at that rate.
Yep. That's the answer to the question.
So is it reasonable to say, would it take till the next meeting to determine if these fit in, in the budget, or is it, I, I proposed two meetings. Is it reasonable to say one meeting or two meetings that you guys can have conversations and see what's been proposed and if it fits in the budget?
I believe we could do that within the next two weeks.
Okay. It's not 20 cents.
I really need some cooperation, if you will.
Likewise. So table at two, might I make a recommendation?
No, thank you.
Nope, no, no, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor. The discussion is on the motion on the floor.
The motion is to postpone this till, or two meetings.
Could you try again?
Any, any other discussion on the motion?
That was a commercial break, I'm sorry. Counsel, I, I can acknowledge that we don't have perfect information on this. I think we have good enough information on this, and, and one of the, one of the questions that was answered in advance of being asked is going to be incumbent on the administration and the department heads to make it fit. I feel like they're even asking us to tell them to make it fit. And I'm referencing the document that Tanner provided us. I'm gonna vote no to table, and I think we're, we have enough information.
I haven't, I haven't made a motion to table. I've motioned to postpone it.
I'm gonna vote no, I'm wishing to postpone, excuse me.
What's the difference between postponing and table?
You can't table. Table means you can bring it up at the same meeting again.
Okay.
Table is, is inappropriately used by a lot of organizations. Table means you're, you're table, you're gonna discuss it later in the same meeting. Postponing it means you're gonna either postpone it to a separate date or to indefinitely.
Okay. I, I'm just gonna speak. I would, I'm against postponing it as well. I, I think we have good enough numbers here that can be worked out in the details with communication that needs to occur, obviously. And I feel like we need to move this forward.
Can I add? I'm with Mel on that. I mean, Terry, the auditor's office has had the same information that we've had for the same amount of time. And I think that between the mayor's office and you, I think that you guys need to sit down and hash this out. As far as what it could be, I mean, I, personally, I'm not the auditor. I think we probably have money for this. I'm not for postponing it, so I'm also, but I think that between you and them, like, like Jay said, and what I've read up here provided tonight by the mayor's office, is that it's like they're asking us to tell you guys from city council that you guys work together to figure this out. So that, that's where I'm at.
My husband worked for the fire department centuries ago, and when he was on the fire department, his wages were very low. My kids, matter of fact, in grade school, we could have gotten discounted luncheons and so forth because it was so low. So I know what you're all talking about, and I know how many people left the fire department and went to Columbus or Newark or wherever. And I, I know what all you're talking about. I'm only by finances. I, I know every one of you are worth more than what we can pay you. That's not my concern. I know you're good, and I wanna pay you more. But I also know we gotta stay in our budget, because I don't wanna pay you more, and then we are bankrupt, and we can't make the next raises, and we get into a financial problem. So I wanna make sure that we have the money, because we're gonna go into negotiations here real soon. So I would like to make sure that we have all our bills paid. I don't want any rumors going around that we owe money to somebody else. I wanna know every bill is paid. I wanna know what the money is, the city is secure. I wanna see the money so that I can give them their money, and I know they're gonna be secure in getting paychecks afterwards. That's where I'm at, because I know they're worth it, Tanner. I know they're good employees, and I don't wanna lose them. But I don't wanna give them state today and tell them tomorrow, I'm sorry, we have no money. That's where I'm at. So I mean, it's, I know where they're at. I've lived it. I know. It's, it's, it's not easy. Life's not easy.
Any discussion on the amendment? The amendment is postponed this for two meetings.
Can I amend my, amend my?
You can amend the amendment.
So I will amend it to, what's the next meeting? April 22nd?
I know that puts a real rush on you, Terry, but I really would like to see.
Ma'am, that's not the problem.
I would like to see everybody working together. I'd like Tanner, I'd like the mayor, and I'll come to all the meetings. I'll be right here.
We have a motion on the, we have an amendment on the floor. It needs a second.
Is there a second to the amendment to the amendment?
Second.
There is an amendment to the amendment to, to move this to April, I mean, yeah, April 22nd.
Can I make another amendment?
No, that would be a two, then we can either turn, turn it down, and then we can start over again.
Okay. I, I'm gonna speak against it still. I feel like we need to move this forward.
Any other discussion?
I'm saying. This is the third reading. I feel like this should have been hashed out before now. It's very disappointing that this is where we're having this discussion when we've had a bunch of this data.
You gotta remember, they just gave us this paper, and they didn't give us any time to study it beforehand.
What paper?
When they handed this to us that time, they just gave it to us that night.
This legislation we've had for three meetings.
Well, afterwards, but I meant at the time when they gave it to us. They didn't give it to us at that time.
That was six weeks ago.
Okay, so there's an amendment to the amendment to move this to one week instead of one meeting.
One meeting, two weeks.
Two weeks, April 22nd. Any other discussion on that amendment to the amendment? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
No, I don't see any reason to kick the can down the road again.
Ms. Keener.
No.
Mr. Miller. Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
No.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes, on the amendment to the amendment. Is that four?
Three.
Four to three, failed.
Failed four to three, so now we're back to the amendment. And the amendment now is to postpone this.
Is that the amendment failed, so now we're back to the first, the original motion, which is to postpone this four weeks.
Four weeks.
Right. Now, Mike.
Wait, we had amendment to the amendment.
No, 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 is that we, we stopped Mike from making an amendment so that we could clear the first one. So we're back to the original motion.
Square one.
My original motion to postpone for two meetings.
Yes, for two meetings, four weeks. Now, Mr. Miller, I believe, was going to make a, a next amendment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I would make an amendment that we vote on it tonight.
Well, you don't need to, you just need to.
So we're back to the original ordinance at this point.
If we turn this down, we vote on it tonight.
Okay.
And then, everybody knows we're back. The motion now is to move this to.
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Two meetings.
Wait.
Two meetings.
Yes.
Yes.
That was my original.
That's the original, the original motion.
Yes.
We've not voted on that.
I'm gonna speak against that as well.
Any other discussion on the original motion to suspend it for two meetings? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
No.
Ms. Keener.
No.
Mr. Miller.
No.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
No.
Mr. Mayhem.
No.
Okay, now we're back to the original ordinance.
So move to adopt ordinance 2024-14.
Second.
Move in second, we adopt the ordinance 2024-14 as presented. Any discussion?
I think we've talked this to death.
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
No.
Mr. Ruckman.
I will be voting yes, and let me just say, every one of you is worth what we can give you. Thank you.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yeah, no.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, you're worth it, but I gotta have the money.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
And by vote of?
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Five to two.
By vote of five to two, this ordinance is adopted. Now, we use the ordinance number 2024-16, Mrs. Woods.
Move to adopt ordinance 2024-16.
I, I didn't read the ordinance.
I apologize.
Ordinance number 2024-16, an ordinance establishing compensation for supervisory and professional personnel effective January 1, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Move to adopt ordinance 2024-16.
Second.
And move in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion?
Terry, can I ask you to step up there one more time? I'm not gonna jump through the hoops on this, and I just wanna have it on the record. Are you confident we can afford this ordinance as it's presented here?
It would not, it would not be in my best interest, ma'am, at this time, at this time.
Can you define at this time?
I did see some information over the last couple of days. Some of it, they depended on looking through some of it. It did not appear to be quite accurate. And so I'm not sure, I personally, counsel, I'll let you be aware. I personally did not sit in on any of the discussions or the calculations or any of the numbers in regards to this process. I would have been glad to have sat in had I had been invited. However, I wasn't. Thank you.
I, I'm gonna take a second here. We need people in this room to communicate. Everybody's gotta be on the same page, and when you're not on the same page, we're not on the same page.
And right, I agree with you.
And it's, it's give and take for everybody. I, I'm, I'm gonna vote to move this through believing that we have enough brain power and, what's the word, cordiality to meet together and to resolve this in a.
Thank you.
Professional way.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So that we can take care of these people.
I know. I work, I've worked with a lot of these people over the, over the years here, and I would have been glad had I had been invited. Thank you.
We gotta, we gotta get this, we gotta figure this out.
I get to sit up here as chair of this committee, and I've taken a lot of input from folks, and I know I've been kind of put on the cross up here, but I, I had to present the questions that were given to me. And I want everybody in this room to understand, there is nothing in my soul against what you do. Trust me, I understand how hard you work and what you're worth. But we sit up here as council, responsible for making sure that this city financially stays sound. And when I've been asking and asking and asking, and I cannot get an answer to, can we afford? Can we afford? Can we afford? And I literally can't get answers, that is why I have to vote the way I did. It is nothing against you guys. And I, I hope that's communicated to you, probably hasn't been, and that's okay. I can, I can go to sleep tonight, understanding why it wasn't. But it is difficult to sit up here and make these tough calls when I see, you know, 20% raises, 36% raises presented. We, we are allowed to ask the question, where's that money supposed to come from? Because trust me, tomorrow, my phone will ring off the hook when this passes. Thank you.
So I would just like to say, as somebody who has recently been forced to work outside the county, not for the same nice reason that you guys would have to make more money, but because I am too controversial to work in this town, basically for doing things like this, I feel like if I can make a difference for people to work in the community that we love, I should do it. And so I'm not really impressed or swayed by threats from individuals, but what does shift my perspective is knowing our employees and their work ethic and their heart and their love for this community. This is the second process that we have gone through since I've been on council, and we really missed the boat last time, and I supported the Clements-Nelson study when we did it before. I am supporting this because I am supporting this because I trusted the previous safety service director, and I have a lot of faith that our current safety service director can move us forward in a fiscally responsible way that takes care of the people that take care of us. And that is why I am in support of this.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
No.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
No.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Five to two. Now, we move to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance number 2024 day 17. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024-17, an ordinance establishing compensation benefits in terms of employment for the recreation director full-time and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Miller.
Mr., uh, President, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take resolution ordinance 2024-17 to its third and final reading. The co-chair of said committee usually seconds the motion, sorry.
Second.
I'm just reading along, because he's gonna second.
Second.
We're beating all these issues to a horse.
Then move in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Miller.
I move to adopt the resolution ordinance 2024-17.
Second.
Second. Sorry.
Been moving- Been a long night.
You said resolution, then I got lost again.
We've beat a lot of things tonight. Thank you.
And moved in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Miller.
No, I think we have discussed this position since the original budget appropriation. We discussed it at committee. This tonight was its second reading. We presented information of the value of our city parks. There is confirmation that the city will post this position with the hope that we get 50 people apply for it. And I've been assured that the person who scores the highest or best decision on behalf of the city will be the person that gets it.
Just to clarify, there's no test for this.
Well, an interview.
Right.
Correct. Interview. There's not a civil service test.
There'll be a rigorous interview, and the valuation process for this will be that this person brings in more than they are paying.
Any other discussion?
I have enjoyed a lot of the data that you have shared with us as far as parks are concerned, and I think it is really one of the more unique aspects of Mount Vernon when we compare ourselves to the surrounding communities, that as a result of our green spaces and our parks, that we punch well above our weight. And I am eager to see what this allows us to do.
Thank you. I can say that I have spent two years getting to know Mr. Hinkle about how he operates and runs the city parks department. I've met many people out here today. I mean, they work their butts off. I've seen Tom. I've been with Tom's crew after hours and on weekends, cleaning up messes in at least one park. And at the same time, I have gone into the tax office, and they have filled out my taxes for me. Not that they do that for everyone, and that was before city council. I think we have-
They do mine. They do mine for me.
And you know what it was? It was because I retired, and I thought I still had to pay taxes on my state pension. I, the city, working with city employees has been an absolute wonderful experience for my entire life, both professionally and after I retired. The city employees do work hard. I have watched this whole pay business, you know, from afar until this time, and it's, it's a difficult thing for everyone to go through, but to follow up whatever it is. We, we need information to make decisions, and if our, if other city leaders aren't like this, it makes our job that much harder, and we're getting through it, so I'm sorry, but thank you all.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Now, I move to ordinances for first reading. We have three of those. The first one is ordinance number 2024-18. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024-18, an ordinance repealing chapter 551 of the codified ordinances of the city of Mount Vernon, state of Ohio.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes, sir. We're gonna give this its first reading. I believe I've already asked, but just in case I haven't, we're gonna have a committee meeting on this. Captain Andrew Burns is gonna bring his quarterly, bring us a quarterly report in the next meeting, and he's also going to discuss this. Council, you can see, you can see it in the agenda, and so bring your questions to the committee meeting in the next first reading.
This ordinance receives its first reading. Now, we move to ordinance number 2024-19. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024-19, an ordinance establishing the Mount Vernon Job Creation and Retention Tax Credit Program and Making Related Authorizations.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. All of council should have received a memo on this from Mr. Gocke with ADF. We will have a 10-minute committee meeting at the next council meeting.
Yes, sir, this receives its-
And it's getting its first reading, sorry.
This ordinance receives its first reading. Now, we move to the final ordinance. It's ordinance number 2024-20. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024-20, an ordinance to authorize the Mount Vernon Fire Department to collect fees for required inspections and tests and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes, sir, we're gonna give this its first reading. Mr. Hill, I need a five-minute committee meeting. Chief, I'm gonna need you to come back. Three meetings in a row. Sorry about that. And we'll, we'll have a committee meeting on this next time, first reading.
Thank you. This ordinance receives its first reading. That concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. Now, we move to remarks of the administration. Mayor Star.
Thank you, Mr. President and council. A few things I want to mention. First of all, I wanna thank Tom Hinkle and his crew from the street department and everything for all the work that we did on the tire recycling day. I also wanna thank Delaware Knox Mary and Morrow County for the grant that they have helped us with that. Mel Severance played baseball, but I'm convinced he actually threw the discus.
I did, actually, in middle school.
All right, well, Mel was a beast out there hurling these tires. Just for clarification, I think I misspoke when I said each, each dumpster held, holds 300 tires, right? I think I misspoke and said 600 tires. It's 300 tires each. Anyway, we had it set for 9:00 AM to 1, or to 5:00 PM. We got two dumpsters, not knowing how this was going to go, and by 9:45, both dumpsters were filled. So, you can imagine what we said. Anyway. It was yay, more tires, yes. Anyway, since this was the first tire recycling day that had been taking place in the last four years, we were the only ones in the district to do this. So, we decided to extend it to noon, or call it at noon, and we would continue to take tires. We lined them up. In all, we filled seven dumpsters. These are tires that are not gonna end up, it's expensive, yes, but we are, we did go back to DKMM, and they are gonna help us out a little bit more. I, I know that Tom's talked with Jenna, and, and so, we did break in just under $1,700 in donations, because it does cost to recycle these tires, which will go toward lots and lots of things. But this was a major hit. It was, as my friend called it, hyper-successful. And so, it's a great, it's a great success story for, for the city of Mount Vernon. These are tires that are not gonna end up in the rivers. They're not gonna end up in fields. We're not gonna burn them, and instead, they're gonna go to playground equipment and, and other sports fields and so forth, so. Well done. Thank you again, and Mel, you were the beast. I swear you got-
I still feel it in my shoulders.
I'm buying you a cup, I'm buying you a cup of coffee, brother. I'll tell you that.
I'll take that.
The, one of the things, just so you know, because we, we continue to see, this is capacity crowd. We continue to see overflow almost, well, pretty regularly. I mean, this is, we've had like six or seven times where we're at capacity crowd. So, I floated the idea to President Hawkins and Mr. Hill, and I think a couple of others, do we need to increase our capability to have the overflow area? And the, that would be the basement downstairs? Absolutely, yes. So, we, the current system that we have does not allow for that to be able to run a hard wire. Would hate to have to just have Facebook, or I'm sorry, YouTube streaming it, so, which is delayed about five minutes. So, what we wanna do is invest in a, in an upgrade to our, our video switcher, run a hard wire down to the basement, so it's in real time. That way, there's no delay for people who, if we can't, if we're at capacity, people can still go down there. I mean, eventually, we may need to have a, a third one, depending on how quickly we move. We may need to have a third output in the lobby. Who knows? If we look long-term for electronic signage and everything like that, we might wanna do that. But for the meantime, what does it boil down to, and what we think estimate-wise is, is gonna be about $5,000? That's equipment and labor. So, we clearly need it to be able to continue to show our transparency, as well as the opportunity for people who cannot or may not want to be up here, we can do that switch. The, one of the things, we had the great big huge rain last week. I don't know if you remember. We peaked, what was it, Wednesday? Last Wednesday, we peaked with a considerable amount of sewer water running through our sewer plant. Now, every day, we process 3.5 million gallons of sewer water. Every day. We peaked at 23 million gallons on Wednesday. We were able to handle that, because these guys did a great job. Did a great job. I can't tell you how proud I am. I was thinking, I was, I almost called you at 3:00 AM.
Charlie Brown and his crew.
Charlie Brown, our new assistant director. Thank you very much. Yes. That's part, that's part of, that's part of the puzzle here, because I see Josh Belts, he and his team from, from distribution and collection, are going out plugging these holes, and they're just moving on to the next one. And so, we know we have infiltration systems, and we know how we have pipes and water lines that are breaking that we have to fix, and we have to find money to do that. And so, we're faced with, okay, how do we raise the money to do that? And so, that's why we are wanting to do comprehensive planning, and that's why we are wanting to do grants, more grants, and, and to provide the opportunities for people to continue to grow and develop. And with that, I will say, when I was working on my doctorate, this was on, this was looking at onboarding, and what are essential elements of onboarding? Now that we have an onboarding program, there are different phases or steps to this that are very important. And you can't, and my research showed you can't skip steps. You have to go through all of these if you're going to be successful. Preboarding, what are we doing to recruit people? What are we doing to offload and take off the amount of, of work so that they don't come in and they have to start filling out papers and, and pencils? And by the way, the millennials and the Gen Z'ers, the moment you put a paper and pencil in front of them, they're gonna bail. Orientation, which is often confused with onboarding, that that is a sliver, a very small sliver of what the onboarding process is. You're not helping me out here. And so, that's what, what do we need to know at clarifying, clarification, compliance issues, those sorts of things that enable us to be able to legally operate and so forth. Throughout this, the use of technology for, for payroll, for feedback, for human resource integration systems, and, and among other things, our work order system. Finally, now, our staff are able to go out and use the, what's it called, Brad? It's called- Asset Essentials, yes, thank you very much. I have to talk with you about that, too, because there's, there's some good news I have for you. And so, the, the technology is a huge part. It's woven throughout. Having a mentorship or a buddy that can kind of not only show you where the ropes are, where you park, where you guys go out to eat on Fridays or whatever, but someone else who can look at your career. And by that, networking and connections. How much do you get a chance to network and connect? How much do you get a chance to connect with us? We heard the communication argument. The communication works both ways. The phone works both ways. The email works both ways. It's not like Tanner and I are just sitting on our bums doing nothing at all. So, we get pulled in many, many different directions. We all know we can be better communicators, but we need help. We need you to meet us. And when I was on council, I'm not telling you how to do your job, but anytime I saw a piece of legislation with my name on it, I didn't wait for Dick Mavis to call me. I called him, or I called Joel, or I called Bryant, or I called whoever I needed to call. Hey, I see I've got this, this piece of legislation. What's going on? That was an individual choice, though. Professional development. We have invested in professional development, leadership training and so forth. And so, we are starting to see some of these, these projects and our leadership skills grow. This is one of the things that is, is very important, that's going to be, as we look to the future. We have to have professional development opportunities laid out from the moment that people, we start recruiting. Because what are their options? Is it just this, and that's it? You look at the police department, they're offering K-9. They have the school resource officers. They've got bike patrol. They've got mental health, or what's the community advocacy type of areas. We've got patrol division. We've got traffic patrol. We've got SWAT team and, and others. And so, there are breadth of opportunities in addition to depth of opportunities. So, be able, being able to, to have those things are incredibly important. Feedback. Getting feedback. Not only the feedback that we expect from our, our team members to know that they are getting the information we are providing them, but the feedback from them. What are, where are we not getting the information that's, that's shorting them and shorting their skills? And all of this woven throughout is the culture. And we have changed the organizational structure in pretty much every department, I would say, from major, major overhauls. And I believe people are happier, because we've been, we've been able to broadband skills, and we've been able to break down silos and make things more pleasant in the workplace. It's a little bit easier and more fun to come to work. And so, we can only do so much, because Wednesday, we are going to thank our employees for their years of service. This Wednesday, salaries and wages and benefits have to be part of that culture as well. I can't candy coat it for anybody. I know this job is based on making decisions that may not include the most perfect information. Can we all be better communicators? Of course, we all can. And so, meet us in the middle, please. Anyway, I can't tell you how proud I am of, of this group, who come to work every day and paint on the canvas of the city of Mount Vernon. I consider them to be fellow artists. Thank you.
Thanks.
I can't do that, but, you know, we get passionate. We come in and we, you know, make these statements, and but at the end of the day, we're doing it all because we're on Team Mount Vernon. And we can walk out of here, and we can still be friends, because ultimately, we did it for Mount Vernon. Leave it all in the field, because we did it for the 17,000 people that are out there, and they expect us to do it. And that's why we're all still here, because we like doing it. We're a, to quote Vin Diesel, family. So, I'm proud to be here, happy that we were able to get this over the finish line, but it's not over. Talk about working together. This is where we come into play, and we sit down and we do the dirty work, and we bring it back, and we show you what we did, and you vote on that. We all have our lanes. We're gonna stay in those lanes, and we're gonna do it. With you, Bruce. Civics, right? So, in addition to that, talking about that transparency and community, or communication piece, I'd like to roll out one of the first Civic Plus products that we can give to the public. Write this down, 38276, 38276. Text MTVOH. If you don't know what that means, that's Mount Vernon, Ohio. MTVOH to 38276, and you will sign up automatically for text alerts from the city. 38276 is the number. Text MTVOH to opt in. All standard rates apply. 38276, text MTV Ohio, or, sorry, MTVOH to 38276. And you will opt in to citywide alerts, non-weather-related alerts, citywide. If you sign up online, and tomorrow on our social media page, we will release the online signup, where you can opt in for text and email alerts. And you can even identify citywide by ward, and we'll put the ward map out there. That way, you know what ward you're in. I get it. And then also, you can sign up just for events. So, if we've got the Mount Vernon Music and Arts Festival, if the Woodward's doing something big, if we got the first, the Front Porch Concert Series, which we just met with- big, if we got the first, the Front Porch Concert Series, which we just met with today, what? There you, Satan told you. All right. I ain't playing. All right, yeah. Did you doubt me, kid?
I think he did.
All right. So again, 38276, sign up for that, you know, if we're working on water lines and it's in your neighborhood, and there, or there's some sort of, you know, traffic delay, if the moon goes in front of the sun for some weird reason, you know, and something's backed up, we want to be able to get out there and let you know that something's going on. It doesn't have to be in a constant, you know, cloud of what's going on at the city. We want to find modern means of communication. That way, you know that the city is reaching out to those 17,000 plus the thousands more that interface with the community. We are an innovative community, authentically hometown, and we're going to meet that expectation that people have for us. And with that, I'm out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Press.
I'm going to be very quick. Last week, I had the pleasure of watching these guys up close and personal and fighting a fire, and I was, chief was back there, he was on his radio trying to run the operation, and I'm asking him all these questions, and he's being very patient, and I'm like, well, what about the family? And so, well, we got Red Cross hooked up, and they're coming, they're going to put them up, and I asked Terry, what's going on as the inspector, and he was answering questions. So I just wanted to say, those guys, a big thank you. I was impressed with how they handled themselves. They were working with, what, five other departments and communicating and doing all that stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank council for their hard work tonight. The law director's office has myself and six other people. They work really hard to provide not only services to the city, but also to provide safety to the entire county. I really appreciate what council did for my staff this evening. Thank you.
Severns.
Yes, thank you to all the department leaders that came tonight and all of our city workers. I appreciate you more than I tell you. Just a few things, counsel, for the, this is mainly for you, and this is, in my view, I was elected to help the city meet present and future needs. I think of traffic congestion means that we need more direct and safe routes to get across the city to each other and to local businesses. And we've talked about this before, but change in our city has occurred. It's occurring right now, tonight, and it's going to occur. Will I embrace this change? Or will I push issues down the road and then look back with regrets? One of my life sayings is live without regrets. It's actually on my watch band right here. And I want to make good decisions, first time. I don't want to have regrets. I was elected by the many voters in Mount Vernon to essentially improve the quality of life and experience of the citizens of Mount Vernon. There are times when this means supporting a resolution or ordinance that benefits a few people in one section of the city. There are times when this means supporting most or all of the residents. In other words, as a council member, I believe it's my duty to support what is better or best for the greater good of our city, even when some citizens will not be satisfied. That is the conundrum that public officials often face in this necessary work, determining what is best overall for the public, even though a few or some are not happy about a decision. What I can promise as a council member is that I will consider, continue to consider all data, facts, and citizen opinion, and will make the best decisions that I can going forward. Will I, will I do my best to make a good decision? Yes. Will I always make the right decision? Probably not. Do we have challenges before us to solve specifically related to infrastructure? Absolutely, yes. Related specifically to the decision to vote for Resolution 2024-23, which is known as the Edgewood Project, to move into the design phase of Edgewood after prayerful consideration of all the data, facts, and public input, I believe this project is for the greater good and benefit of Mount Vernon. As we grow, and we will grow, we talked about a couple developments tonight, we will need better and safer routes across our city. So I just wanted to make sure that council knows where I stand. I mean, I think we have to look at what is going to benefit our city and move us down the road. I don't want to look back 20 years and have regrets about decisions I'd made or didn't make, because we are going to grow, and we got to, we got to build for the, the infrastructure for this growth. I feel like that's on us to be smart about that. Thanks.
Mrs. Woods.
Can you remind me who fixed the air conditioning again?
Thank you.
John May. Thank you. Thank you.
It's getting hot up here.
In more ways than one. Mr. Hawkins, welcome back.
Well, thank you. Thank you for filling in for me for the last two meetings.
You're very welcome, and I'm sure your wife and I will have a wonderful vacation next year while you're not. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
No, couldn't say it better myself, Mel. Thank you for saying that.
Mrs. Siebel.
Nothing tonight, either.
Mr. Mahan.
Thank you, sir. I have it on my calendar, Wednesday, we're going to see you at the Mount Vernon Nazarene University. We're going to welcome the employees, and I'm looking forward to that. I hope you all are, too. I, as I went through this tonight, it reminded me of the gentleman who used to sit to my left and how, how he did his homework. And this, Mike Miller, I appreciate how you continued in that, to do your homework. And I hear it loud and clear, it's incumbent on me and all of us to continue to do our homework, to communicate from us, and to expect communication to be returned. I heard, heard loud and clear tonight from the folks, and I believe was Ms. Pritchard, challenge us to be accountable. I heard you, loud, loud and clear. Ball's in your court, friends. I'm going to steal words from my friend, Mr. Miller, said, you said you'd make it fit. We're asking you to work together, all of you, and make it fit. Appreciate you. I appreciate your work. I appreciate being in Mount Vernon. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ruckman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I just want to thank everybody for being here and for so many of you speaking passionately on this subject. I know that we don't always agree on everything, including the ones up here on council and within the administration. I do appreciate every one of you and appreciate the fact that we are elected to make hard decisions. Apparently, it's not all naming buildings and stages and roadways like some people led me to believe. No, I'm just kidding. But anyways, and all that aside, I just want to thank you for all of the input that you guys had and for so many people putting in the research and speaking so passionately about this subject. I would also like to bring up again the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant opportunity that we have. If you are in the second ward specifically, we are, we have the opportunity to get up to $750,000 as part of the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant, and that is going to be taking place on Tuesday, April 16th, and I believe that's going to be at the BNO. This can go to fund a lot of different things, a lot of different opportunities. It can fund sidewalks, street improvements, storm sewers, parks, demolition, street lighting, crosswalks. There's a lot that this can go for, and it's really imperative that members of the community actually really show up. So if you live in that section between West High Street and Greenwood Avenue over there, please show up to that meeting if you're looking for more information on it. I believe that you can...
Is it 5:30 or 5?
5:30.
5:30, yeah, 5:30, I'm sorry. Yep, 5:30. AM or PM?
PM.
But yeah, please show up and actually have your voice heard as far as that's concerned, because we can't make the best decision if we don't have input from the community. And so I would just implore you to please show up to that meeting. If you need any more information, feel free to get ahold of City Hall. Thank you.
Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I can't actually talk about Mount Vernon, or I will apparently cry. I would just like to say, I love that the quietest, sweetest, most gentle woman in all of the city came here tonight and rained down fire and brimstone on us, and I thoroughly appreciate that. A couple of things. Number one, next Saturday, April 13th, from 9:00 to 12:00 is Pheasants Forever. If you've never been there, I know it's not a city event, but it is just outside the city, going out towards Apple Valley on 36. It's on the right. It is a great time. I would encourage anybody to take out their kids, or their grandkids, or just you. The food that they cook on the fire is fantastic, and you get to shoot every gun that's ever been created. And my last thing, speaking of pencils and pens, and those of a younger persuasion not enjoying it, could we possibly create a committee meeting minutes document that we could do on our little computers? Because Todd knows that I don't write those. So it would be very helpful for me because he gives me lovely pages every year, and I, I don't use them. So if we could create an online way to get that done, you would like me more. Just putting that out there. Oh, and Mr. Reinhardt, can I see you for two seconds after the meeting? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I appreciate council's opinions and debates, and we can't be seen as a rubber state, a rubber stamp council. You know, we do express our opinions, and we can't be accused of that, but, you know, I like, Mel said 20 years, I always said 25 years. I, whenever I make a decision, I wonder how that is perceived 25 years from now. And is it, are people going to say, what in the world was he thinking when they, when they made that, that decision? So think about the future. Think about how those decisions will impact the future of Mount Vernon, because that's important. I'd like to thank the media for being here this evening, and thank all of you for being here this evening and expressing your opinions. That being said, I call for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
And moved and second, we adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. We adjourn.